Do you happen to know, has it been broken down for you yet, what the impact would be to decrease it from 10 percent to 9 percent, a loss of about $30 million, but perhaps to add some new areas of taxation, as you just pointed out, some of the new technologies?
Well, we don't know about the new technology. We do know that, for example, telemarketers, they have a 5 percent versus a 10 percent, or what would be the new 9 percent. What we have is different combinations. The bottom line is, if we don't have $270 million that we currently have in the budget, then we will have to make some drastic cuts. And when people talk about a nearly $7 billion budget, when you look at the funds that are already restricted to pay off bonds and other restricted funds, we come up with a $3.8 billion for the City of Los Angeles that we can use, and nearly 70 percent of that $3.8 billion is for the police and fire services. So when you narrow it down, $270 million is a huge cut, something's going to have to give, and that would be services, whether police, fire, or some of the other critical services that we have. The majority of our dollars go into salaries for our municipal employees, and they deliver the services.
There's one more complication that I hope you can help me with, because as a citizen, taxpayer, and voter, I'm confused here. Let's suppose this does go to the ballot early next year. The voters approve this 9 percent new tax, or reduced tax, and yet the city prevails in court, and the 10 percent tax is not overturned or declared illegal. What prevails?
Well, if we were sneaky, we'd say, now you're going to pay 19 percent. That's not the case. This will replace the 10 percent. Regardless of the court situation, that will be pushed aside. The 10 percent will be reduced to 9 percent, and that'll then prevail, and at 218, the voters will approve that. We need 50-plus 1 percent to have this approval. And again, it's the voters' choice. We're simply giving the voters of the City of Los Angeles an opportunity to vote on this. If they vote it down, then we're going to have to find out how we're going to cut $270 million out of the budget. If they vote to support it, their tax would go from 10 percent to 9 percent. Currently, we're paying 10 percent. We've been paying it for many, many years. So it's not really a new tax, and there's this whole possibility, if the court rules against it, well, if the court rules for it, we're still going to push it aside and come up with the 9 percent versus the 10 percent.
Got it. Okay, thanks for clearing that up. As you know, both the chief legislative analyst and the city administrative officer are characterizing this proposed revision as a modernization of the telephone users' tax, the TUT. Yet they want a tax technology not yet available. Some people say, wait a minute, that's a new tax, and that has to be approved differently by the voters.
Well, that's clear. It would be a new tax under new technology. What they want to do is modernize, and again, the Internet, cell phones weren't here when this TUT tax was first implemented about 40-plus years ago. So what they want to do is include any new technology that may take place. I don't think that's unfair, but under 218, the voters would approve this. That would then be captured in this tax base, which would hopefully, down the road, give us additional revenues for the additional services that we provide. Again, our city is expanding in population. We're at 4 million, and we're continuing to grow. We need to have sanitation trucks pick up the trash. We need to have the police officers, the fire, the libraries, the wrecks and parks, all those services that people oftentimes take for granted. Not just police officers and firefighters, but all those municipal services. We could cut trash pickup to one time a month instead of every week. I mean, there are cutbacks we can make, but what will be the negative impact on the city? We have to take that in consideration. So there's a lot of factors involved with this particular issue and the modernization, when it comes to modernization of the telecommunications field.
And I guess for any viewer who's just parachuted into the middle of this controversy and doesn't understand it, as frankly, in many ways, I don't understand it, the council did not vote to implement this tax. You've just voted to put it in front of the voters in February, correct?
That's absolutely correct. This is going to be the voters' choice, and there's a lot of people saying, we don't want to do it. If you don't want to do it, then vote no. Vote no, but accept the consequences of a $270 million loss to the fund of the $3.8 billion. We'll make cutbacks. We can only make so many cutbacks. How many officers do we want to cut? How many fire stations do we want to close? How many libraries? How many times do we want to cut back on the sanitation department and pick up of the refugees? There are many cutbacks that are going to have to take place if this does not pass. And the mayor's committed to me that he will work vigorously to convince the voters of the City of Los Angeles how critical this is and how we can absorb this loss. But if the voters vote no, it's their choice. If they vote yes, we can remain stable. They vote no, we're going to have some major consequences and major cutbacks. Again, 70 percent, nearly 70 percent of this budget goes for our law enforcement and our fire service. We don't have enough police officers. We have adequate fire service, but we can always have more. People have to pay for it, and that's what government does. We tax to provide a service. This loss would be a major loss for the services that the City of Los Angeles provides to the 4 million residents.
Of course, what you technically did this past week was to declare an emergency in the City of Los Angeles. Some people around the horseshoe have called it a 218 emergency, yet I think you were a little uncomfortable at one time as we watched your discussion. Councilmember Smith, even Councilmember Hahn, were a little questioning of the notion that this is an actual emergency right now.
That's correct, and I was very vocal. Prove to me it's an emergency. Prove to me that if we don't have this revenue, we're going to have disaster in the City of Los Angeles. And when I met with the mayor, and Mr. Smith, my colleague, met with the mayor, he was very convincing by telling us the consequences. Some people think there was some kind of a trade-off. There was no trade-off with the mayor. It was very clear. We cut this $270 million, these are the consequences. 2,700 police officers, half the firefighters, and other vital municipal services would be cut. Very clear. If the money's not there, we can't provide those services. It's not a scare tactic. It's a fact of life. If we don't have the money, we can't afford it, and that's the bottom line. So the mayor was very convincing to me, and that's why I changed to say, yes, we are going to have an emergency if this doesn't pass. If we lose in court, which we don't know if that's going to happen or not, we don't have this 9 percent versus the 10 percent with the modernization, we would be facing a major emergency in the City of Los Angeles, because we wouldn't have the facilities to pay, the resources to pay for those services that we currently provide to the people of this city.
And of course, a few days before, you did vote to declare that it would be an emergency. I saw here on Channel 35, we broadcasted live, the mayor and members of the City Council Budget and Finance Committee talking to representatives of all the neighborhood councils around the city, trying to get their, I guess, buy-in to the notion that this would be an emergency and that they should go back and try to get voters to actually approve this.
That's clear, and I asked the mayor to do that. I told him I was skeptical. I told his staff I was skeptical. I told him that I want to make sure that we convince the voters if it's, in fact, a true emergency. And clearly, when you look at the dollars that are available for the non-restricted, we have to pay off bonds. There are restricted funds. We have nearly a $7 billion budget, but when you take the restricted funds out of that equation, you've got 3.82. And out of that comes this $270 million. So the bonds are being paid for. The other indebtedness that we have is going to be taken care of, but these dollars are critical, and that's what I asked the mayor to do, and through his staff, and he did go to the neighborhood council. I don't know if he convinced them or not, but people need to look at the numbers, they need to look at the impact, they need to look at the significance. We can be fiercely conservative, and we can be irresponsible in managing the City of Los Angeles, and the mayor is very adamant. His responsibility is to make sure the city is managed properly. Now, clearly, this loss would have a major, major impact on our ability to deliver services to the people of Los Angeles.
Well, let's get to another specific. You've talked about police, fire, trash, libraries, things like that. Might there also be layoffs of city employees? And aren't there things that we could do? For example, a few years ago, there was a hard hiring freeze in the City of Los Angeles. Are there other ways that we could offset some of the loss potentially?
That's true. We could do a hiring freeze, and that's one of the options. The fact of the matter is, that's new hirings. We currently have people in positions, in the safety services, in the municipal services. If you don't have the money to pay, if you have a $270 million cut, you're going to have to cut some positions. Certain people, certain positions, certain categories will lose their jobs. Certain departments may be consolidated, but we tried to come up with different formulas. The bottom line is, you're going to have to have some major cuts, and when nearly 70 percent of the revenue from that fund, the $3.8 billion, goes into public safety, police and fire, where's the major cut going to go? We could close down all the libraries. We could close down the wrecks and parks. We can close down many operations, but you're not going to come up with that $270 million by shutting those departments. We can shut down the zoo. You can't come up with $270 million by doing that. So there'd be major cuts. We know that police and fire would have to absorb some of those cuts. Again, that's public safety. It's not a scare tactic. These are real numbers and real consequences if we don't have those dollars.
I'm not an economist, but it occurs to me that $270, $300 million taken out of the local economy could have a tremendous economic impact, all on its own, even.
That's clear. I mean, this city runs on dollars. This city runs on sales revenues, and when we see the real estate market going through the crisis it's going through, when we see the stock market, when we see gas approaching $3.50, maybe $4 soon, it affects the economy of the city. If we don't have the dollars, obviously, we can't provide services. This city is run by about 40,000 municipal employees. Now, people may say, we have too many municipal employees, but when your trash isn't picked up, and the rescue unit doesn't arrive, and you're having a heart attack, then people say, where are the services? We have these services for the people of Los Angeles. We're obligated to deliver those services, and it costs money to deliver those services. So sure, there's a lot of consequences involved. Again, the issue is dollars and cents. $270 million, out of that dollar that we have to provide services, basic services for the people of the city.
And during the meeting on Tuesday, the 16th, you also voiced some concerns about exemptions currently in the TUT. Are you comfortable with the answers that you received from that?
Well, the question came from reviewing all the exemptions. For example, telemarketers only pay a 5 percent versus the current 10 percent that everyone else is paying. That's an issue, and my colleague, Jack Weiss, brought that up. And there were other exemptions. For example, news services, news bureaus. Many of the radio stations no longer have news services. They're exempt altogether. When we start looking at the nine different categories of exemptions, I'm asking, are those appropriate? Maybe some of those should be paying. For entertainment, they should pay like everyone else. People in the military, in a combat zone, they should be exempt, and they are exempt under the current provision. But the exemptions, I made a motion, we're going to get a report back to discover which of those exemptions should be eliminated or modified. Clearly, lobbying was done 40-plus years ago to exempt certain categories, and I think we need to review that and decide which ones are properly exempt, which ones should be revised and no longer exempt.
Finally, what happens now? For example, in the last few minutes, you've sounded very much as if you're now prepared to go out and campaign in favor of getting this 9 percent telephone users' tax approved on the ballot.
I'm going to simply tell the voters and the constituents that I have of the consequences. I'm notorious for speaking the truth and for being direct. I get to the point. I learned that in many years of law enforcement. Get to the point. Just the facts, ma'am, Jack Webb. I want to find out the facts, and I want to tell the facts to the people, but it's up to them. If they want to absorb those cuts, then vote no on this. It's clearly up to them, but I'm going to give them the honest facts, the honest figures, and the consequences of that. If they want their trash picked up every week as it is now, or every other week, or once a month, if they want to live with that, and they want to live with a cut in the police department, the fire department, the paramedics, et cetera, if they're willing to accept that, then vote no. But I'm simply going to give the facts and present the facts as they've been discussed with me and presented by the city folks, and if people want to challenge these facts, I welcome the opportunity to challenge these facts, the facts and figures, and the numbers that are involved. They're all factual, they're all accurate, and I'm going to simply deliver that message and let the voters make the choice. The choice is up to them.
Sounds like it's going to be a lively discussion for the next several months. District 3 Councilmember Dennis Zine, thanks for coming in and joining us on Council Week in Review.
Always a pleasure being with you.
Your Los Angeles City Council, in a unanimous vote of 14 ayes, approved the measure to declare a revenue emergency and to have a special election on Tuesday, February 5th, for the purpose of submitting to voters a reduction of tax rate and modernization of the telephone users' tax. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the City of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 19th, 2007. On behalf of Martine Martinez and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Bring your family to Hollywood Santa Parade, Sunday, November 25th, at 5:00 p.m. Santa will be there to help kick off the holiday season in style. Come early to enjoy all that Hollywood has to offer. Go Metro to Hollywood and Highland. Call 1-866-PORADE-1 for more information.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 23rd, 2007. Welcome to the John Ferraro Council Chambers in City Hall. We welcome our viewers on Channel 35 and our guests that have joined us here in Council Chambers. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. here in Ferraro Council Chambers, or the first Friday of the month in our Van Nuys City Council Chambers. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, and I am joined this morning by Councilmembers Alarcon, Gruel, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Reyes, Smith, and Zine. Pursuing to council rules, all council members should be here and in their seats at 10:00 a.m. It is past the hour, and we are still awaiting Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Weiss, and Mr. Wesson. Ms. Perry is excused to arrive at 11 o'clock this morning. Not only are we broadcast live on Channel 35 and rebroadcast in the evening, we are also available online. If that is more convenient, log on to lacity.org, and you can catch live streaming webcast of our council meetings. There's also video on-demand feature, which allows you to access our archived council meetings from the past and read our past agendas as well. Finally, if you're close to a telephone but not close to a television or your computer, you can always call Council Phone, which is 213-621-CITY, and listen to the audio proceedings of the City Council meetings, or any of our committee meetings as well. We invite members of the public for general public comment, which is for items that are not on our agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the City Council. Please fill out a speaker card in the back or at our Van Nuys City Hall, where we have teleconferencing, video conferencing capability, and please hand that to the sergeant-at-arms, and we'll make sure your comments are heard. Also, items that have not yet held a public hearing in committee are available for public comment here in the full council. Similarly, please fill out a speaker card and hand it to the sergeant-at-arms. Our agendas are available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special meetings. Those are available in person at the city clerk's office, here in Council Chambers, or online at lacity.org, where there's also a wealth of information about improving your residential communities, your businesses, and for visitors to Los Angeles. I want to thank the council members that are here. We now have 10 members, so Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. 10 members present and acquitted. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute for today.
Okay. Mr. Labange, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I can ask everybody to please rise in Council Chambers for the pledge?
Raise our right hand over our heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Clerk, next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll come back for public comment.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 8, there are two reports on file, and motion is required, and as much as the recommendations differ.
Mr. Parks moves the budget and finance report on that one. Without objection. Okay, and why don't we hold 1 and 2 on the desk until we receive 12 members in chambers? Items 3 through 10, colleagues? Number 10 for Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Weezer?
3 and 8, please.
3 and 8 for Mr. Weezer. Any other specials, Mr. Parks?
On 8 and 9, we should move both reports.
You want to do both reports, okay.
And then on number 1, we want to call special.
Okay, that's been called special. We'll await 12 members as well for that. That leaves 4 through 7 and 9. Any specials, colleagues? 4 through 7 and number 9. Seeing none, we will go ahead and take up the balance then. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 11 through 31 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and I believe there is a substitute motion, and it works on item 25O.
Okay, and we have cards on 24 and 25, so we'll call those special. The other items, we will open and close the public hearings, if we can hold 11 until we have 12 members as well. Any other specials, colleagues? This is now 12 through 31. 12 through 31.
Mr. President, you have cards on 24 and 25.
Yep. We have those called special. Any others from 12 through 31, colleagues? Seeing none? If we can please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, item 32 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and 10 votes are required to reinstate.
Okay. Any objection to consideration? Seeing none, that is before us. We do not have any speaker... Not only are we broadcast live on Channel 35 and rebroadcast in the evening, we are also available online. If that is more convenient, log on to lacity.org, and you can catch live streaming webcast of our council meetings. There's also video-on-demand feature, which allows you to access our archived council meetings from the past and read our past agendas as well. Finally, if you're close to a telephone but not close to a television or your computer, you can always call council phone, which is (213) 621-CITY, and listen to the audio proceedings of the city council meetings, or any of our committee meetings as well. We invite members of the public for general public comment, which is for items that are not on our agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city council. Please fill out a speaker card in the back or at our Van Nuys City Hall, where we have teleconferencing, videoconferencing capability, and please hand that to the sergeant-at-arms, and we'll make sure your comments are heard. Also, items that have not yet held a public hearing in committee are available for public comment here in the full council. Similarly, please fill out a speaker card and hand it to the sergeant-at-arms. Our agendas are available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special meetings. Those are available in person at the city clerk's office, here in Council Chambers, or online at lacity.org, where there's also a wealth of information about improving your residential communities, your businesses, and for visitors to Los Angeles. I want to thank the council members that are here. We now have 10 members, so, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present and aquorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute for today.
Okay. Mr. Labange, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And if I can ask everybody to, please rise in Council Chambers for the pledge.
Good morning. Raise our right hand over our heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Clerk, next order of business, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda, and then we'll come back for public comment.
On the regular agenda, Items 1 through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held. On Item 8, there are two reports on file, and motion is required, and as much as the recommendations differ.
Mr. Parks moves the Budget and Finance Report on that one. Without objection. Okay. And why don't we hold 1 and 2 on the desk until we receive 12 members in chambers? Items 3 through 10, colleagues? Number 10 for Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Weezer?
3 and 8, please.
3 and 8 for Mr. Weezer. Any other specials, Mr. Parks?
On 8, 9, we should move both reports.
You want to do both reports, okay.
And then, on number 1, we want to call special.
Okay, that's been called special. We'll await 12 members as well for that. That leaves 4 through 7 and 9. Any specials, colleagues? 4 through 7 and number 9. Seeing none, we will go ahead and take up the balance then. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 11 through 31 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and I believe there is a substitute motion in the works on Item 25O.
Okay, and we have cards on 24 and 25, so we'll call those special. The other items, we will open and close the public hearings, if we can hold 11 until we have 12 members as well. Any other specials, colleagues? This is now 12 through 31. 12 through 31.
Mr. President, you have cards on 24 and 25.
Yep. We have those called special. Any others from 12 through 31, colleagues? Seeing none? If we can please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
On the continuation agenda, Item 32 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and 10 votes are required to reinstate.
Okay. Any objection to consideration? Seeing none, that is before us. We do not have any speaker cards on 32, so we will open and close the public hearing for today. And, Mr. Parks?
I have a motion that we receive and file.
Okay. We'll go ahead. Mr. Parks makes a motion to receive and file. If there's no objection, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is received and filed, and without objection. We'll send that forthwith. We now have 12 members, so, Mr. Clerk, if we can take up Item 11, or Madam Clerk, or Mister and Madam? Please open the roll on Item 11. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. And Items 1 and 2, if we can, please take those up.
Actually, Mr. President, Mr. Parks called Item 1 special.
Okay.
And I believe there is an amendment in the works on Item 2.
Okay. We'll hold those both on the table. Thank you. Does that finish the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
That does.
Okay. So we'll return now to public comment. Want to call out... Oh, yes.
Can we do 11 forthwith?
Yes. Without objection, we'll send 11 forthwith. Our first two speakers are out in the San Fernando Valley, in Van Nuys. Our first speaker is Donna Perman, and then Sarah Armstrong will follow, and then we'll come to public comment cards here in City Council Chambers. Good morning, Ms. Perman.
Yeah, good morning, City Council. Maryam is... She couldn't be here today. She's not feeling well, but she'll be back, and she'll tell you how to run things. Well, I'm not Mary Fogler, but here it goes. Mr. Garcetti in City Council has heard you on council phone on Friday. I heard about American Italian Day. I heard Mr. Garcetti can be pronounced Mr. Garzetti and Mr. Garcetti. Well, Taylor here, Tyler here. Mr. Arnold... You're so amusing. Anyway, Arnold Sacks, why do you go after hard-working, middle-class city employees? It's silly to complain about the cost of living giving to city employees like teachers, firefighters, police, sewer. I dare you to go after to cut down on police and firefighters. You would never do that. It would hurt you guys politically, and so don't do empty threats. We need them. We should get more, in fact. And we don't want the parcel tax. It should be on property... Shouldn't be on property taxed. We're being taxed over our houses, and people are living on credit and going bankrupt. It's bad. Anyway, why go after middle-class... Some people do dangerous and professional jobs and should be paid... Shouldn't be paid less. When huge money gets to be spent on Grand Avenue projects and North Hollywood projects, Hollywood projects, and Playa Vista, and fee waivers, of course. Why don't people complain about huge salary of the city council members and city managers? It's easier to go after an easier target who don't have time to defend themselves. We need to go after city council perks. Why don't you make city council accountable? Instead, city council makes Iraq resolutions. Forget Saddam Hussein killed untold number of men, women, and children. Oh, I forgot Muslims don't count. Of course, you don't have an answer of what to do about terrorists. City council, keep your nose out on city issues, especially after these fires. We all have a problem. We're in an emergency right now. Instead, city council spends time with a festival where everybody yells "Viva Mexico", Mr....
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Appreciate your comments this morning. Sarah Armstrong, also out in the San Fernando Valley, will be our next speaker, and then we'll return here to Council Chambers for Dr. James Lyons. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Armstrong. I sit on the working committee that is writing the permanent ordinance for medical marijuana in your county. On Thursday, October 11th, the DEA once again swept into town raiding a compliance club that was fairly famous for its activism. During last summer's raids, they raided an empty storefront, and they raided another place that was closed and simply packing up, had already given notice to the DEA that they were out of business. I would like to ask the city council to disengage from accepting any money from the DEA. In the past, this would have left the LAPD in a bad situation, since they are always in need of money. But now, medical marijuana dispensaries pay taxes, tax money which you can access, to offset whatever money comes in from the DEA for partnerships. The DEA does not know what it's doing. It's raiding the wrong places. We need to put this back in the hands of the LAPD, the people who live in our community and know who's who and what's what. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Dr. James Lyons will be our next speaker here in Council Chambers. Dr. Lyons? We can also, if you'd like... We have a microphone. If you'd like to stay in your chair, whatever is easiest for you. After Mr. Lyons will be Sky Anderson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is James Lyons. I want to congratulate, recognize President Garcetti and the chamber. I was here last meeting, and Councilman Rosendahl, I want to congratulate him and the chamber for making that resolution of bringing our boys home. The other thing, the reason why I'm here is because I'm a senior, and I'm disabled, and all the districts have seniors and disables in the district. And I ride with a company called Access, which most people probably are familiar with. And the month of September, between the 7th and the 26th, I spent 25 hours stranded in the cold by this company. And for four months, I haven't been able to find the policing agency. The state say they don't handle it. The city say they don't handle it, and somebody has to be policing this company. And if it's not, it should be. And so that's why I'm here this morning, and my number is on the... My application. I would like, if I could, to get some help in finding an agency that can control this public transportation. For many years, I have pride at California for taking care of its disabled and its senior citizens. And now, this is my first time down here. This is the only place I knew to come. So that's why I'm here, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak, and I would appreciate if somebody would... I'm going to be in the back. Somebody would try to help me, give me the information where I can write or speak to an agency, because I'm sure they'll subsidize some kind of way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lyons, and we will get somebody to come over and speak to you with that information. Mr. Labange over here is assisting with a chief legislative analyst who can assist with that, and I know Mr. Rosendahl as well. Our next speaker is Sky Anderson. After that will be Cory Escalante. And, Mr. Rosendahl, if I could just ask you to step a couple steps back for Mr. Anderson. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Good morning, ma'am.
I'm Sky Anderson. I've been a resident of Los Angeles for eight years. I come up here fairly frequently, and people may get the idea I'm an angry man who just wants victims to do... Make subjects of my anger. To a degree, that's true, but I'm really concerned about the hopelessness and the pain of homeless people. I was on San Julian and Sixth Street yesterday, and I saw maybe with a baby carriage kind of thing, and she had a two-year-old boy, looked like, and he had bruises on his nose and bruises on his lips. She had two other young children, and I asked a friend of mine who worked for the missions what's wrong with it. He said, "Well, they can stay three days in our mission, then they get out because they have to be... We have to report them to the social services agencies, and afraid the kids are going to be removed from them." I'm a recovering addict. I spent a month in a hospital detoxing, and as they told me every day that my best friends got... My best thinking got me there. I had to change my thinking. I was at a meeting at recovery Friday night, and the guy was homeless. He spent three months in the treatment facility, and now he's got a good life. I appeared here on October 10th, a Wednesday, and I was quite angry, and at the end of my talking, Mr. Garcetti said he would like for me to help his staff develop a program to help the homeless. I'm going to get a CD of that meeting to prove that's what he said, but I'd like to work with Mr. David Gershwin, his chief of staff, and get some recovery people who beat this homeless rap and help Mr. Garcetti do what he says he can do. Mr. Garcetti is a very compassionate man. I know he is. I've done his horoscope chart. He said he goes down to Skid Row. I talked to a friend of mine. He's seen him on Skid Row walking around. I'm just asking that he put this compassion into action and get people recovered from this disease of addiction who don't live on Skid Row anymore, and I want to help, and I've got people who want to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. We appreciate your comments. Cory Escalante is our next speaker, and then Don Duncan.
Hello, my name is Cory Escalante. I'm a resident of Los Angeles. I'm here to speak about the raid that happened on October 11th at Alameda and First Street. We were there in downtown protesting at the governor's office, asking him to stand out for medical marijuana patients. We had a representative of Dennis Zine's office there speaking in support of us as well. However, later on that evening, we were... We found ourselves gathered in front of the dispensary at first in Alameda protesting the DEA raid that was being conducted. I counted 15 to 20 LAPD officers standing in front of the building, protecting the DEA while they robbed the facility. I also saw an LA city parking official blocking off the street. So I'm here to ask that the LA city council adopt a policy of non-cooperation, and such that they will refuse to cooperate with the DEA while they attack medical marijuana patients, which attacking medical marijuana providers is an attack on medical marijuana patients. We asked our governor to stand up that day, and he gave us the finger. So please, we ask you to stand up for us, and please continue your support. We've had support in the future, I mean, in the past, and we ask for more support. More action needs to be taken, and please, right away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don Duncan is our next speaker.
Good morning, President Garcetti, council members. My name is Don Duncan. I'm with Americans for Safe Access. We're the nation's largest medical cannabis advocacy organization, and I am a resident of Los Angeles. I'm here today also to ask you to move quickly with the proposal for non-cooperation with DEA enforcement of medical marijuana laws. It is very important that the medical marijuana regulatory process is protected from federal interference. We had a raid just on the 11th, another one, this time at one of our model collectives, one of the ones that is an example of compliance, of professionalism, of tax-paying operation here in our city. And they were targeted at the exact same time that advocates were gathered downtown to talk with the governor. There's a pattern of behavior that's unfolding in Los Angeles that's unacceptable, and we need your continued support to oppose this crackdown and to stop this cooperation and this coordination between the DEA and our local officials. Our police department has very important work to do, and they don't need to be distracted doing this federal dirty work. We have an opportunity in Washington, DC right now to make a real difference in the situation with medical cannabis, and that's going to impact the patients right here in Los Angeles. We're going to have a new DEA administrator within the next few weeks. Karen Tandy has resigned. And we also have Congressman Roybacher working to address issues about cross-deputization and about the DEA letters that have been sent to intimidate property owners right here in Los Angeles into evicting their tenants. But we need a safe space. We need a safe space for our regulations and for the political work that we're doing to finally implement Proposition 215, and the key to that is the support of this council, the continued support of this council. And I want to thank Council Member Zine and his colleagues for the support we've seen already. We still need your help to make sure that the DEA doesn't come in and target the remaining collectives that are good citizens in our Los Angeles communities. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Zine would like to say a few words to address the last couple comments briefly.
Mr. President, thank you. I want to acknowledge the folks that are here.
Hold on one second. Let's make sure your headphones on.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge the folks that are here. I did send a letter to the DEA administrator, and no response, which is not a surprise. They're just ignoring the local wish, the local will, and the local jurisdictions. We are not going to relent in our championship for medicinal marijuana through the legitimate operation. You folks worked with us on that ordinance. It's now in place, so we are going to remain strong and vigilant to this, and hopefully the new administrator of DEA will come to some senses and realize local jurisdictions can manage it properly, and it will be beneficial to those that need it, and the people who are involved in recreational. There's enough narcotics enforcement for people who are involved in recreational...
Excuse me, Mr. Zine. It's not on the agenda, so only a brief...
Well, I was responding that we are not going to relent in our campaign.
But only a brief response.
Pardon me?
Only brief, though.
Only what?
Could only be brief.
Is that brief enough?
That was very brief. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And briefly, Ms. Hahn?
City Attorney always wants to shut me up. Briefly, I also want to respond that we actually are having a report back from LAPD. I think it's due the 29th on our options, but as you said, you can... We can request the DEA all we want, but I think we have the authority to ask LAPD to not cooperate with these raids, and that's where I would like to move forward.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Ms. Hahn said. I hope our LAPD does not work with the DEA on these issues. You know, we in California put Proposition 215 out. It should be respected by the feds. Thanks.
Thank you all for your brief comments in response. That closes our general public comment. If we can take the first item, I believe Number 1 was called special by Mr. Parks, and we do not have any public speaker cards, so we'll open and close the public hearing on that. We've already had the public hearing on that, so Mr. Parks and then Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've resolved our issues with it, and all I'd like to do is make one direction, that the CLA and the CAO and the city attorney work to determine whether the consistency of this language with the consistency with the language regarding training and the reimbursement if somebody leaves. And so those... That's the only issue that's hanging, but the ordinance is prepared to go, and I ask for an "I" vote on this ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
I'll pass.
Are you okay? Okay. All right. With that, let's go ahead then and open the roll on Item Number 1. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That ordinance is approved. Next item, please.
Item 2 is being held for a possible amendment, which still has not been circulated.
Okay. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I'd like to, Council President, present a verbal motion regarding Item Number 2, and the motion will read as follows. I hereby move that the attached ordinance be substituted for the building code revisions recommended for adoption by the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. This attached ordinance includes minor technical corrections. So again, this is what we have to do on a cyclical basis. It allows us to be consistent with the new codes that come forth, and allows the city to be in compliance. And the ordinance has been passed out.
It's been circulated, okay. That revised ordinance is now before us. Any other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
As approved, and we'll send 1 and 2 forthwith. That... Yeah, without objection. Both numbers...
Without 2, please.
1 and 2 forthwith, without objection. Next item, please.
Item 3 was called special by Council Member Weezer.
Okay. Mr. Weezer, we have Item Number 3.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I... This is a motion that was passed recently by the Budget and Finance Committee, where we are providing... The city of Los Angeles is providing 10 surplus ambulances to the nation of Peru. As many of you recall, on August 15th, 2007, the southern coastal region of the country of Peru was devastated with an 8.0 magnitude earthquake. The council general who's with us today here, today from Peru, Mr. Alberto Massa, contacted my office, and we started to work on what we can do as the city of Los Angeles to help Peru in this time of need. Their most pressing need at the time was ambulances, given that in Lima, Peru, the ambulances they had there had to be dispersed throughout the country to assist it in those areas of need. And we're happy that here in Los Angeles, with a large number of Peruvians who live in the city of Los Angeles, we're happy to show them that we're helping their country, and we know that we've been building relationships in the last few years to continue to provide support one another. So I want to thank the council for their support as we provide these 10 surplus ambulances to the country of Peru in the event that we would see another unfortunate incident like the one we saw with the earthquake, and we want to also help them in this time of need. So thank you very much, council, for your support on this. And, Council President, I think we also have the council general of Peru with us here today who would like to share a few words.
Sure. If there's no objection, we'd like to invite Mr. Alberto Massa forward to speak. The council general of Peru. Colleagues, if I can please direct your attention.
Shh. Thank you very much, Mr. President, distinguished members of the Los Angeles City Council. First of all, I want to express in the name of my government our great concern for the fires that are causing so much damage in Los Angeles and Southern California, affecting the lives of thousands of people and generating irreparable losses. Our thoughts and prayers are with them in these difficult moments. In spite of the fact that in the last century, the human race has achieved levels of development never seen before in the fields of science and technology, our pride and our feelings of self-assurance can still be badly shaken by the forces of nature, the same forces that we str... The same forces that we struggle to dominate and that provide us with the energy and the material means to conquer other worlds remain, remain us from time to time that there are, and there still will be, questions in the universe that lie far away from our understanding. Peru has faced during the present year and presented a series of disasters. First, there were the floods in the Huayaga region, which affected thousands of poor people living in the jungle. Then the inhabitants of the Andes were affected by extreme and unusual cold temperatures. They lost their cattle and crops, and their lives was put on risk. But the worst was yet to come. On August 15th, one of the strongest earthquakes recorded, eight points in the Richter scale, destroyed the cities of Pisco, Ica, and Chinchas in the southern part of Peru. Hundreds of people died, and thousands were left homeless. Hopefully, our brothers and sisters in other parts of the world have extended to us a helping hand. This is the case of Los Angeles. I want to express in the name of the Peruvian government, oh, sorry, the fire department and the consulate of Peru and Los Angeles, our sincere thankfulness to the city of Los Angeles for the donation of ten ambulances or any other supplies or equipment for our fire department, which will help to alleviate the hard conditions that the people of my country has to face these days. The fire department of Peru has to cope with extreme budgetary difficulties to acquire the best, the basic tools of work. Among other things, they lack the sufficient number of ambulances to cover the disaster areas. Firefighters are volunteers in Peru, and they are obliged to do their job with very limited means. Thanks to these donations, our firefighters will increase their capability to help people in peril and in need. This is, though, a very special contribution of the city of Los Angeles to my country that we highly value, especially in the present circumstances, for which I want to express once again our deepest appreciation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Council General, and Mr. Weezer.
Council General, we're happy as the city of Los Angeles to donate these vehicles. I also want to thank Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Parks, who contributed and gave some good suggestions in the Budget Committee as to how else we can help with some of the surplus equipment we have. So we're happy to provide this, and we have a lot more work to do together. Thank you very much, Council General, for coming today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will take the vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved, and we will send that without objection also forthwith. Next item, please.
Item eight was called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Okay. And Mr. Parks has moved both reports on that. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure that we're adopting the Budget and Finance Report, and we're noting and filing the Arch, Parks, Health, and Agent Report. If that's what's in order, or do I need to make a motion for that?
I'm sorry. Could you restate that?
Yes. I just want to make sure that we're adopting the Budget and Finance Report.
Right.
And that we're noting and filing the Arch, Parks, and Health Report.
And Mr. Parks, you had moved both, but you just wanted to do Budget and Finance? Is that correct?
My motion was move Budget and Finance on item eight.
Okay. Great. So without objection, we'll move that report. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 10 was called special by Councilmember Alacon.
Mr. Alacon, item number 10 is before us.
Yes, members, I don't think I need to expound on this too much. The fact of the matter is, the census is around the corner, obviously after 2010, and we lost a lot of money in the last go-round because we failed to win an argument with the federal government to identify a certain category of folks to ensure that we get every federal dollar that we deserve. This was a problem throughout the state of California, but most importantly, in Los Angeles. In fact, Los Angeles lost more federal dollars than anywhere in the nation as a result of the undercount by the US Census. So this, this motion would simply create a local organized effort in concert with the Census Bureau or other local governments, nonprofits, and the state to do a complete count and to, to really create the mechanism so that what happened in the last census will not happen again, to put us in, early on, in position to, to work to get every person to be counted appropriately and give Los Angeles credit due relative to the census count. So this is a simple motion that sets in place, asking the CAO and CLA to report, to, to establish the complete committee, to get it rolling, and to initiate the work needed to get ready for 2010 and, about 2010 to 2012.
Thank you. We have Mr. Labange, Ms. Perry, and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. Is anyone here from any department to speak to this issue? Mr. Miller?
Chief Legislative Analyst is here.
I want to thank Mr. Alacon for his leadership in bringing this issue forward. Mr. Miller, on the issue here, numbers are so important. Tell us more. What do we need to do to prepare to do the right thing in the coming census?
Well, again, what's, what's before you today, in terms of specifics, is transfer of money from the UB that is in this year's budget and the establishment of the, the actual team that will be focusing on the census in 2010. As Mr. Alacon indicated, it's, it is going to be essential to do outreach. We're also directed to come back with identifying CDBG funds and other funding that can be used for outreach programs. We'll be working, you know, with the state to get funding, and the key is going to be to make sure that the federal government does an accurate count of people in Los Angeles because so many of the benefits and so many of the funding is contingent on the census count.
Who's our expert on numbers and census?
We have people in our staff, John Wickham, of course, and we've got the contract with Dave Ely, who does a lot of census and demographic data for you. And also, this would include the hiring of executive director and staff to also work with us.
What others have at numbers, too, and I know, members, when, let's say, target department sources are going to put in a target, they also look at numbers. They look at numbers from what, from business done in Bradstreet or somebody, or are we familiar with that aspect of their demographics?
Well, not in detail, but they use a variety of information, you know, business databases and census tracks.
Who's our expert on that? Who's our expert on business databases?
Well, again, I think you've got a whole variety of, throughout the city. We have demographic experts, again, on staff and on contract. Planning Department has experts in terms of, of data as well.
Right.
You know, CDD, the mayor's office, Business Outreach Team, so there's a variety of sources for specific information and data.
So what's this, this is, we're not hiring anybody, we're just putting a group together?
This would include the funding of an executive director and staff to establish the unit.
How many people would that be?
It would be executive director and how many staff? Three staff.
Three staff?
Yes.
And were they in your office? Where'd they be?
This is proposed to be in the mayor's office. This is, was also in the mayor's office for the Census 2000.
Right. I just think numbers are extremely important when you look, whether it's census, whether it's business, and information, you know, is knowledge is power, and if we want to have the, the right power to help Los Angeles do the right things, all that information is really important. I, when is our timetable to put this group together?
As soon as possible. They need to get up and running. Yes.
And what committee and council will it report to?
The demographic data goes to planning, the remainder goes to, yeah, housing, I'm sorry, HCD.
Housing. I just really wish to look at this tremendously, and all the other numbers and all the other data, you know, and to figure out how to do a better, a better job of serving people with the information that we can get from all sources on this. This is certainly important from a government standpoint, but also from a business standpoint, how the business looks at the community and what goes on there. Thank you, Mr. Wickham. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Mr. Alacon.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Ms. Census 2000, Jan Perry.
Oh, thank you very much. I sound like a former beauty pageant queen. Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to make just a couple of quick comments, that this is a really good investment for not a lot of money, to work on building for our future. When I ran it in 2000, actually, it was just myself and very few staff people in the office for about a year, because we started two years out like we're doing now, and then the final year, then you focus much more heavily on the outreach people. One of the biggest disagreements we had with the federal government in counting the homeless is how to define an encampment, and it's something that I intend to press on pretty hard because the weather is so great out here. You know, encampments out here can go anywhere from two people to, you know, fifty, sixty people, and there's a different interpretation when you come from the East Coast because of the cold weather and the fact that people are going to be forced inside different times of the year. That among some of the other issues of counting children and things like that. So I think this is a really good investment of money and that we push very hard. Hopefully, the county will follow suit with their own committee to make sure that we do this well as a city and as a region. One of the other things that's really important is to work very hard on logistics and not to rely on the federal government. When we did the homeless count in MacArthur Park, the night that we did that, they ran out of materials, and it was pretty frightening to see people lined up with shopping carts and things like that, actually wanting to be counted and not having enough materials to document that they were there. So that's going to be really critical, that we focus very heavily on outreach to people, not people who are already in beds, because it's easy to find them, it's the ones who are not.
Mr. Rosendahl is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you, Mr. Alacon, for putting this motion together for us. Morning, Jerry. Okay. So what happened in 2000 in terms of the funding we got the last eight or nine years? We got an undercount, and we didn't get the right amount of money. What was the reality there?
Well, again, I, I think it is generally accepted that, that there was an undercount in, in the city and in the county, in fact, perhaps largely due to the homeless population, but it's, it's difficult to count, and it's difficult to get the federal government to accept the count. And that's going to be one of the major charges, is to, you know, work aggressively, establish the methodologies for counting, getting out there and identifying people that are counting, because many of the formulas, many of the formulas that flow to the city and the county are based on census data.
Undocumented immigrants, are they counted into the census?
That's a good question. They, I would argue that they certainly should be, because there are demands for services that are required.
You would argue for that, but is it clear from the federal government's standpoint that we should be counting undocumented immigrants as well for the formula?
I don't believe that that is clear, and that's one of the issues over the next two years, as before the census starts, that we're going to have to aggressively pursue.
Can we have our arm in Washington, look into that issue right now?
Absolutely.
Because there's no question, we have the largest number of undocumented immigrants in the nation in LA City and LA County, and they should be counted within the count for the obvious services.
Correct.
Okay. Next point is this. Seventy-three cents of every tax dollar of Californians come back in services, meaning that we don't get our fair share. Right now, $50 billion a year we donate to the rest of the nation at the expense of, of California. We in Southern California are in total gridlock, and we need $100 billion now to create a transportation infrastructure, and a good number of that dollars has to come from the federal government. And all these presidential candidates pandering for our money here should also respect us enough to say, "Transportation infrastructure, Southern California, is critical." One way we can get this is to have an accurate census to point out there, 20 million of us in Southern California. We are the economic engine of the nation, and we're underappreciated by Washington. Will this help?
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Just a couple of questions. One, now that the, our representatives in Washington DC don't respond directly to the council, correct? They work under the mayor's office?
They do report to the mayor, yes.
So what do we have to do, some kind of a motion to direct them, or a communication in the mayor's office to make sure they follow through with the request from Councilmember Rosendahl and the observations of Councilmember Perry?
Well, again, I, we, we do have a very close relationship, as you know. Many of the people in Washington used to work for the CLA, and they're still there. So we will be interfacing with them, and, and I would anticipate over the next--
Please hold my time.
I would anticipate over the next couple of years that there will be a, a number of legislative official positions that we'll be bringing to the council for you to take relative to this, so.
I came across an interesting piece of information. Dr. David Hayes-Bautista, demographer, has done a lot of research regarding the amount of money contributed by the undocumented. The dynamics are such that they are being essentially, I'm going to say this, when they work, they pay into the coffers of the federal government.
That's right.
And it's the FICA and whatever else is in there. But they never collect, because they don't stay long enough, they migrate, they move into other jobs. My understanding is a close to $16 billion a year that sits in the Social Security Administration that's never collected. $16 billion a year that continues to accrue. So there is contribution in the billions by the undocumented into this country's resources. A large percentage of that population is here in Los Angeles. Could the argument be made that if we can identify the number, we can get a proportion of amount returned to us? Is there a way to appeal it to, to a congressional representative or someone that can tap into that $16 billion? Is that asking for too much?
Well, again, I think it, I think it's going to come down to the count and, and how undocumented aliens are counted. I think it all flows from that. You know, I, I think documenting the amount of money that's actually generated, you know, that assertion doesn't surprise me at all, certainly, that they're paying into taxes, they're paying into FICA, they're paying income taxes, perhaps not filing income tax returns and, and getting refunds, et cetera. So I think it would be difficult, in this effort to demonstrate the economic impact, I think the focus of this census effort has got to be very clear, very comprehensive methods for counting to make sure that there are no undercountings in the city of LA.
And I just wanted to share that, because there's a mean-spirited environment in how the sweeps are being conducted, how families are being taken apart, the accusation that they just come here and take and take and take, they never give back. In fact, they're giving back in the billions, $16 billion. They are a critical element of our workforce, and I just want to share that so that we understand that if we can count them, perhaps we make an argument to get what we deserve and given what they contribute to this country. Thank you.
Mr. Alacon.
Yes, members, just, just to clarify, the, first of all, they do count undocumented. That is not the issue. The issue with the census is that they, they refuse to, to do estimates. So they will, they will outreach to folks, and they will make every effort, I believe it's three times, to contact a person that is on their records. If they fail to contact that person, they, they may not, they will not count them in the count. So there's a dispute between the federal government and those who believe we ought to count them. Interestingly, the dispute is not that the federal government doesn't recognize that there are, there is an undercount. They simply are saying that unless somebody actually is documented on, not, not as an undocumented worker, but unless somebody actually fills out the census form or has a phone banker call them and get that information, they, they, they will not, they will not do it. So the point is that we do not want to rely on, that, that we are going to prevail on the argument of, of getting the federal government to estimate the numbers and have a more accurate count. It's all about outreach. If, if the federal government does not change its policy, then we must do more effective outreach to get every dollar that's counted. The shortfall, Mr. Rosendahl, is $8 million, $18 million a year to the city of Los Angeles over 10 years, more than, more than $180 million, and, and you can, that, that factors out. We are, we are receiving, under, underfunded by, we are, are receiving 78% of our dollars. For every dollar we, we, we give to the federal government, we get back about 78 cents as a state, and Los Angeles is the center of that, so we have to multiply it for that. So this, it's critical that we, that we take a very aggressive approach to this. We can't make any assumptions about winning that estimation argument this time, although I would hope that we, we also develop strategies to do just that, if, if at all possible. But this is, is to set up the mechanism for us to be able to have a more accurate census count.
Mr. Cardenas.
What, can you give me an example of the potential value for the city getting involved in the census? I mean, it's a federal issue, right? I mean, the census is something that the federal government does, and they come out to all portions of the United States, and small communities, large, et cetera, rural or what have you, and they count, correct?
Correct.
Now, what does a local city have to do with that, or what would be a potential benefit for us to make sure that they do a good job out here?
Well, it's essential to protect our interests, to make sure that the people who are in the city of Los Angeles, and in fact, the county of Los Angeles, are accurately counted because they're residents here and they require certain services. And much of the funding to support those services is based on the census count. So if we have an undercount here in the city, then in essence, funding is going to not come here, it's going to go to somewhere else.
Okay, so let me just, for the middle-class Angelinos, so that they understand why it's important. One of the number-one complaints in the city of Los Angeles isn't necessarily whether or not people get to eat or not, with all due respect, but one of the number-one issues is transportation. Based on the number of people that we count or don't count, is transportation something that we may get more federal dollars if we have a proper and accurate count and we count the right number of people instead of less than the number of people that are here?
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes. Transportation is one of those issues that is based on formulas, based on population, it's based on transit riders. There's all kinds of allocations from the federal government that are based on census data.
Now, for example, we're the second-largest city in the country, and we're the number-one populated county in the country by about ten million people or so, that's the population. So I would think that we potentially could be talking about every single year the difference between maybe a couple of hundred million dollars in transportation dollars.
Definitely. On the scope that we're talking about with the city and the county of L.A., there's, I mean, the stakes are huge, very large dollars that we're talking about.
Well, I want to give the viewers and my colleagues an example of how important it is for all of us as individual electeds in our communities to engage in the census. When I was in the state legislature, it was just one of those things that I grabbed on to and decided that I was going to try to make a difference. And the fact of the matter is, the only assembly seat that contracted, in other words, got smaller geographically in all of L.A. County, and the only congressional seat, which my assembly seat was inside of that congressional seat geographically, the only assembly seat and the only congressional seat within the L.A. County's limits that actually contracted after the census was my assembly seat. And there was no coincidence because the state of California had tens of millions of dollars in state money, even though this is a federal count, that they were willing to dedicate across the state of California. So what happened is, we took advantage of it. We got more people walking around the streets of Pacoima, Arlita, Panorama City, Sun Valley, North Hollywood, knocking on doors, knocking on garages, talking to people, and getting a much more accurate count. And as a result of that, the population went up in such a bump. And it's not that more people moved into the district, I don't want to alarm anybody. People didn't move in because we were counting them. The issue was that we actually accurately counted, and by no coincidence, that was the only assembly and congressional seat that actually got smaller geographically because when you count the number of people appropriately, then you make those seats based on population. So my point is, if every single assembly and congressional and council seat in our region were to do that, I can guarantee you this, we will guarantee people of the city and community of Los Angeles hundreds of millions of dollars a year more. And it's not for food stamps, if you don't care about those people, it's for your transportation issues. It's so that we can hire more building and safety people, so we can hire more police officers, so we can do all of those things that people want government to do. We need to accurately count. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to get ahead of the game and make sure we're ready for the count. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, I just got a kudos to you, Tony, on that particular comment. What are we doing with our congressional delegation? You know, Democrats and Republicans have to put away their partisan politics on this issue and be united in getting this census done properly. The problem with Washington, they play politics with everything. And we in Southern California have had enough, Jerry. We have had enough of being underappreciated financially. One of the ways to get us back into the play is to get an accurate census. What have we done as a city to talk to those fifty-three Democrats and Republicans to get on the same wavelength?
Well, again, I think we have and we're going to continue to and even be more aggressive. And I think this should not be a partisan issue. Everybody benefits by accurate counts. And I think as Mr. Cardenas found out, one of the big problems that we're going to have to address is largely the outreach is in English. There's some outreach in Spanish. To our knowledge, there is no other outreach in any other language. Now, to suggest that, you know, Republican districts in the San Joaquin Valley don't have Spanish-speaking residents that are not getting outreach to is absurd. So, you know, it should not be a partisan issue. I think everyone benefits from recognizing that accurate outreach is in everyone's interest.
There's just no question, this is one of the most exciting conversations I've had in my two years here, because I know L.A. is underappreciated in Washington. We don't get the proper amount of funding for the tax dollars we pay. And if we don't get that hundred billion dollars together for transportation infrastructure over the next ten years, we will be in deep trouble. We've had it. And the only way to get that money is to get an accurate count and get our congressional delegation united and start to fight for California, which they don't do enough of, I'll be candid about it. The little states like Minnesota and these others get more money than we ever get per person. And this will help us set the ground floor for what we need to go in the future. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Mr. Lavange.
Yeah, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wickham, you know the American Community Survey at all? It's a program, I think a forum. Just, Mr. Scott shared with me from the Mahalan Institute this information.
I'm not familiar with it.
Yes, John Wickham with CLA. The Census Bureau has eliminated the long form. As you remember, every ten years, everybody would get the short form and a few people get a long form with lots of questions about electricity and refrigerators and things like that. That's been eliminated. And they are now, every year, sampling the entire country to generate that long-form data. So the American Community Survey is that annual effort to generate data on more in-depth data.
And to follow up with Mr. Rosendahl's passion there, could we host a meeting with representatives of the congressional delegation or some congress leadership here in Southern California? And maybe, you know, somewhere that they could come together, see the importance of this? I believe everybody would work together if whoever gets in the huddle, they call the play and people listen to it. And people listen to it. So that may be our mayor, that may be the chairman of the Board of Supervisors, that may be other mayors throughout the region that could call the play, that say this is important, maybe advocating, you know, the mayors in the San Gabriel Valley as well. It's all good for the region. What's good for Los Angeles is good for the region. So could we look at that, too? And I think the time, it's 2008 next year, before you know it, and then work on it, build it up? And also, I'd love to see if we could develop a census for our own. I was thinking this morning, I called 311 today. I called 311. You know what they ask you when you call 311? What your zip code is. So I told them twelve because I'm in my car, even though I live in thirty-nine. But I was thinking what would be interesting, and just a voice, what do I call it, instant poll, do you think they should ask 311? Do you know what council district you live in? You think that would be good information to find out if the people who call 311 know what council district they live in? There's four people in the chambers, raise your hand if you agree with me there or not, huh? Some people agree with me. Anyway.
I think it failed for a second, Mr. Lavange.
Okay. I got unanimous vote from the four people in the chambers. Mr. Miller, Mr. Wickham, let's be real good at this. Let's do something special as we build up to it. Let's, you know, also with our neighborhood councils, get them involved in some respects because everyone counts, and that's the simplest phrase. Thank you, Mr. Scott, for your comment there, and also, Mr. Wickham, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our council debate on this issue. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item twenty-four called special for cards from the public.
Okay, we have Donna Perman. If you'd like to actually speak on items twenty-four and twenty-five, Ms. Perman, we'll give you two minutes for each, and we'll take those up together.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for telling me about my time before. It helped me. We don't need more government. It's something to pretend you care about the valley other than a tax source. I don't trust it, trust that because it's more bureaucratic tape, more high-salary employees, more to help the CRA. It looks like the city council really cares outside the box, but I know it's close the roll, tabulate the vote, fifteen ayes, and let it go forthwith. And so, since I don't really have as much to say on that one, can I go straight to twenty-five?
Of course you may.
Okay. City Council, anyway, oh yeah, here we go. Here's our list of fee waivers. Maybe Matt Dow would like to pretend he'll pitch in because he likes them. Though I agree, city councils should look to take some of our fee waivers out instead of passing them all. I don't see why the city is suddenly paying for every event, which event probably also charges the public. Also, most of the events shouldn't be here, so many will pay for a few, like Crenshaw Annual Homecoming, nine thousand dollars, three have block parties between four thousand and five thousand, Latino Film and Book Festival, six thousand nine hundred and seven, which, by the way, I don't have anything against Latinos. Anyway, festival from people from, but I'd like to see a festival of people from Wales, where my name comes from, man, by the pear tree. And Venice Paparazzi Annual Celebration, one thousand six hundred and forty-two, El Sereno, Park, Parking Grove Groundbreaking, one thousand six hundred and forty-two, Pacific Avenue Planting Project, four thousand four hundred and sixty-three, Christian items like Los Angeles Temple Hispanic Four Square, three thousand six hundred and eighty-one, St. Cecilia Festival, two thousand, St. Sebastian Carnival, three thousand three hundred and six, Holiday Ho-Ho-Ho Party, one thousand six hundred and fifty-one, or Lady of the Lords, twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-one. Really, do really have to pay so much for a three-day event? My point being, a CRA is such a wonderful godsend, let them pay for these events or have a fundraiser among our rich. In the city council, you donate. And in the meantime, we have homeless problems, crime problems, our jobs being outsourced, transportation problems, people are leaving the states to get opportunities elsewhere. Fee waivers just make the city council look like Santa Claus, giving away gifts. While it might be a drop in the bucket on how my money is being splurged by the city council, big developers, and CRA, why is it so many events get paid by the city? If you, if you can't afford to pay for an event, let them skip it. Let them live within their means and go without. And I just wanted to say, I think that the city council has a lot of hidden costs. When the city has a problem, why can't we take part of the city council's salary? And, but they get it regardless.
Thank you. If I can ask you to conclude the next ten seconds or so?
Okay. And I just wanted to say I'm against the fee waivers, and we got to come up with a better idea. Okay, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perman. Appreciate it. That'll close, general comment on those two. If nobody wishes to be heard, let's take those up together. Please open the roll.
And, Mr. President, there was that substitute motion, twenty-five oh.
Twenty-five oh has been amended, that has been circulated. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Weston requests to be excused Friday, November ninth, for personal business. The motion is required.
I will move that, seconded by Ms. Gruel. Without objection, Mr. Weston is excused.
Councilmember Lavange requests to be excused Wednesday, November twenty-first, for city business. The motion is required.
Okay. Mr. Alakon moves, and Mr. Smith seconds, without objection. That will be granted as well.
And Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused Friday, December fourteenth, for personal business that meets council policy.
Okay, that excuse is granted.
That clears the desk.
Business announcements, colleagues? Any business announcements? Again, on Friday, we have Channel Thirty-Five set up for community announcements that we invite folks to take all of your items for the following week and announce them as public service announcements. Any business announcements? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions today? All right, if I can please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for our adjourning motions. Okay, Ms. Hahn, is that adjourning motion you have?
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hahn.
I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Icy Lee Copric, Derico, who passed away on October seventeen at the age of eighty-four. A Los Angeles resident for forty-eight years, she worked as a seamstress, a maid, in maid service and in the food and apparel business. As a restaurant owner, she extended credit to those in need. And although she never expected repayment, the community had such a high level of respect for her that they always repaid. She, Icy Lee, became a member of the Prayer Center, Church of God in Christ, where she faithfully served as mother of the church for fifteen years. Later, she was affiliated with the Cosmopolitan Interfaith Prayer Center. She survived by eight daughters, Mary, Icy Lee, Willie, Frances, Stephanie, Joyce, Deborah, and Lisa, two sons, Floyd and Lamar, three brothers, four sisters, sixty-nine grandchildren, seventy-five great-grandchildren, and three great-great-grandchildren. She was the aunt of Jeffrey Copric, who's a founder and the director of the L.A. Inner City Mass Choir. Services are planned at ten-thirty on Friday at the New Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church in Inglewood. Wow, what a great woman.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Alakon?
Yes, members, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in the memory of Max Gonzalez. Max is a resident, had been a resident of Arlita for many, many years. He was eighty-two years old, born in Jalisco, Mexico, and came to Northridge in nineteen forty-two. He worked in Turlock, Fresno, as a farm worker. And in nineteen seventy, he began working at Northridge Hospital until nineteen ninety-five. His most proud accomplishment was his children. He had eight children, all of them have, are partners in a series of businesses. They own about seven businesses. They started as ticket takers and sweepers and whatever it took at the old Panorama Theater in Panorama City, and, which is owned by Bruce Corwin. Bruce Corwin essentially adopted all of these kids and taught them business. They worked at the Million Dollar Theater. And to make a long story short, they run a chain of restaurants, as well as six other businesses, real estate, tax preparation, et cetera, et cetera. They bought the old Don Dreisdell's dugout, it is now a very prosperous restaurant. And they have, their restaurants are called La Sirenita Restaurants, and they have become a very successful family. I remember having a conversation with Max at the Sirenita on Van Nuys Boulevard because he used, at eighty-two years old, he used to come in every day and make sure that the workers came in on time. He would have his chair, I can see it right now, where he would sit there and tell his sons that they needed to get there promptly. And he was, he was quite a tremendous person. He was just one of those people that you knew after thirty seconds was just a genuine, very caring and success, successful person because he had achieved happiness. So he was very proud of his children. The services will be held on Thursday and Friday. And I just, I just want to say to the family that we, they really owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to their father, that's clear, but I think they are a true model for America's families, coming from a different country, working hard and achieving success in the next generation. But he had the opportunity to see that success and was very proud of it. So we are sad to lose Max, but we know that he lived a long, complete, happy life, and his children are thriving as a result of it.
Mr. Cardenas.
I'd like to add to that, I considered Max Gonzalez a friend. I looked up to him. He was just a basic, humble human being. I had conversations with him when I would go eat at La Sirenita. And the beautiful thing about it is, even though he knew I was an assemblyman or a councilman or what have you, he talked to me just like he would talk to anybody else. And that's the way I prefer it. And he just exuded the humility and respect and appreciation. Very, very proud of his kids. He wouldn't say it in front of them, but he was very, very proud of them. I think he just wanted to keep them humble. But I respect and appreciate that because, again, he was a very humble human being, and I'd like to join that adjournment, please.
Thank you. Mr. Lavange?
Thank you, members. I'd like to ask, will you adjourn in memory of Max McGee, who was the athlete for the Green Bay Packers, who scored the first touchdown here in Los Angeles in the first Super Bowl in nineteen sixty-seven? Played eleven years in the National Football League and was an outstanding businessman. Afterwards, also an announcer with the Packers for many, many years, survived by his wife and four children. Max McGee, seventy-five, for the Green Bay Packers.
Thank you. On the side, Mr. Weiss and then Mr. Sun. On this side, Mr. Weiss, and then Mr. Zahn.
Can't talk about the Green Bay Packers too much in this room, Mr. Lavonch. I would also like to ask that we adjourn in memory of the husband of someone that many of us know, I think you all know, Asha Greenberg, in the city attorney's office. Her husband, Max, really wonderful person who'd been involved in civic affairs forever, passed away within the last week. He was a member of Mayor Bradley's Police Commission, and he was -- you all, everyone in this room remembers that Chief Gates at the time made some, you know, really remarkable and racist comments about the chokeholds at the time, and Max, as a police commissioner, was instrumental in revising LAPD's policy. And, you know, at a time when things were frankly a lot more explosive than they are now, he was someone who was always out there fighting for what was right when what was right wasn't necessarily as popular a thing as it is today. That was certainly the way he led his life. He was national chairman of the ADL and involved in numerous other causes. He's survived by Asha, a daughter, Jan Levine, his sons, Richard, David, and Jonathan, and seven grandchildren.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
I'd like to second it. Asha Greenberg is a good friend of mine and was a member of the city council of Santa Monica, and her husband and her were an incredible, dynamic duo, and she spends a lot of her time in the West L.A. office and the location there, and I'm very sad to hear he passed.
Thank you. We'll do all members on that. Mr. Zahn.
I just want to add my condolences. Asha Greenberg takes those difficult, challenging cases, and she's diligent with her work. Condolences to her and her family, just a wonderful lady, and I remember her husband, he was a member of the police commission.
Thank you.
I have one, Mr. President. A police officer, Sergio Carrera Jr., passed away October 18th. Officer Sergio Carrera Jr., 29 years of age, was a four-year veteran assigned to the SWAT team of the Rialto Police Department. Officer Carrera of Belmont, California, spent his home life with his wife and two young children, while he dedicated his career to law enforcement. Shooting death was a tragic loss to the 112 Officer Department, which had been enjoying a rebirth since city leaders decided not to disband the Rialto Police Department. Colton Police Corporal Jim Jollaf said that like most SWAT actions, this Officer Carrera was killed in a serena search warrant. The raid was carefully planned, but even with months of preparation, things can change in an instant, and while it is rare, the outcome can be tragic. Death of Officer Carrera has rattled the community, and the people who knew him, he will be greatly missed. May he rest in peace, Sergio Carrera Jr. of the Rialto Police Department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zahn. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? We will next be in session tomorrow here in city council chambers. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a great day.